All set, Chair?
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. Today is the Townes Towns Board of Selectment's regular meeting. It is Wednesday, November 13th, 2024, and is at 6:00 PM. This meeting is in person and via Zoom at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass. This meeting is being recorded. The listening matters to those recently anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Could we please have a call to order?
Mark Pacheco, present.
Peter Karen, present.
Nicole Mello, present via Zoom.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi.
Can we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? And I just need you to stay standing a few more seconds after that because we lost some people this week that we wanted to be able to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We lost three residents this week, and we ought to be able to just pay our respects to them by mentioning their name and giving them a moment of silence. Donna Foley, we lost, Tiago Rizendes, and Antonio Soares. Thank you very much. First thing on our agenda is Pat. Hi, Pat. How are you?
I'm good.
Seen a lot of you lately.
I know.
Not that it's a bad thing.
You may get sick and tired of hearing of me.
No, okay.
We've been trying to give you an update for quite a while because I know, Mark, it was probably in the spring you asked, or late summer, I don't know. Anyway, but here we are. So, basically, I'm going to give you an update on the surveys that we've been doing, and a couple of the projects that the commission has, and on the 250th anniversary. So I'll start with the survey. So we've completed two major updates to the historic property survey. In 2021 and 2022, we focused on buildings that were primarily 100-plus years old, and mainly in the south end of town. Three areas were recommended as eligible for consideration for the National Register, the Brick Area, which is Center and Pine, Lower Four Corners, Main Street and Elm Street, and the South Dyton District, which is Pleasant Street and both sides of Main Street. And then 15 individual properties were also considered as eligible for listing. The funding for this survey was through our CPC and a state grant from the Mass Historical Commission. Then, in 2022 to 2023, we completed another survey, which focused on the Mount Hope Finishing Company area and village, and these also, and homes that were 100 years plus in North Dyton. From this survey, we had three area forms, School Street, Lincoln Avenue, and Mount Hope Finishing Company. And this survey was funded totally through the RCPC. So, in total, we have updated the survey forms for 200-plus primary buildings, plus outbuildings, landscape features, some monuments, and some burial grounds. Presently, Stacy Spies, our preservation consultant that we work with, is completing a survey on the update of 10 properties and a cemetery in West Dyton, and CPC is also funding this project. The commission can't thank the CPC and the townspeople enough because every one of these projects has to be approved at a town meeting for the support in these projects because we wouldn't be doing this without that support. And it should be noted that these surveys are, they're just like a snapshot in time. There's always more in-depth research that can be done. For example, the house that I grew up in on Pleasant Street was in the survey for South Dyton from 2021, 2022. I did more research and presented a 15-minute talk on its past owners, and I can still add to that house story. So what we're getting is a beginning of the story. So if you want to do more in-depth research, or if the owners want to do more in-depth research, they have a starting point. So, the commission had spent much time reviewing and prioritizing the area forms and the consultant recommendations, and we asked the Mass Historical Commission to evaluate the area forms for the Brick Area, Lower Four Corners, South Dyton, and the Mount Hope Finishing Company and Village. Of these, the Brick Area and the Mount Hope Finishing Company and Village were designated as eligible for the National Register nomination by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. They also asked for more information on the South Dyton Historic District, including adding more properties and connecting to the existing National Register districts that are there, the Quorum Shipyard on Water Street and the Warfs District on Pleasant Street. So, we asked Stacy Spies for proposals for this. Of course, it's going to cost us money. And after reviewing what we had, we asked her for the Brick Area, South Dyton, and Mount Hope. And after review, we accepted a proposal from Stacy to prepare the nomination form for the Mount Hope Finishing Company and Village for $8,500 pending funding. So once again, we went to the CPC, and they approved the funding for this project, and as you know, it's an article on the special town meeting warrant for tomorrow night. So, in September, we had a successful public meeting with the property owners from the Mount Hope area. And at this meeting, we discussed the National Register of Historic Places, the nomination process, and what it means to the area. So I'd like to share some of that with you so that you have the same information. So the first question is, what is the National Register of Historic Places? It's the nation's listing of historic places worthy of preservation. It was established in 1966 under the National Historic Preservation Act, and it's administered through the National Park Service and in Massachusetts by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. It encourages preservation, but it doesn't guarantee it, that the properties will be preserved. Although you have to have historic integrity to be considered, the designation places no constraints on what owners do with their properties using private funding. It doesn't impose any additional restrictions on property owners. The property owner has no obligation to restore or even maintain their property if it's in a National Register district. It's encouraged, but there's no obligation for it. Historic properties that are owned by municipalities and nonprofits are eligible to compete for matching fund grants that support preservation. Federal tax incentives may apply to income-producing properties as an incentive to encourage capital investment and revitalization in historic buildings. And as I said, Dyton has two National Register districts, the Quorum Shipyard and the Warfs District, and these districts were established in 1997. What we're not proposing, what the commission is not proposing, is a local historic district for the Mount Hope area at this time. And I point this out because there is a difference. People confuse the National Register with the local historic districts. Local historic districts are the districts that are established by town bylaw, as outlined in Mass General Law's Chapter 40(c) with a 2/3 majority vote. There's no interior reviews. The architectural exterior features are established by the bylaw. That's when you hear people talking about, they're not going to tell me what color to paint my house. Those kinds of criteria are set by the bylaw. Dyton does not have any local historic district at this time, but it does provide the tools that you need for preservation of an area. However, future conversations with property owners and with town boards are important to determine the purpose and the feasibility of a local historic district. This isn't a decision that is made lightly, and time is needed for the proper consideration. So that's the difference between your National Register and your local historic districts. The National Register is more honorary. It's prestigious. Next steps. So we're proposing that the Mount Hope Finishing Company and Village area be evaluated to be in a National Register district. Tomorrow night, we're seeking funding approval for the preparation of the nomination. If the money is approved tomorrow night, the consultant, Stacy Spies, will complete the nomination form and submit it to the Mass Historical Commission. Then, the Mass Historical Commission reviews the form and works with the consultant and with the commission if any changes are needed on the draft. Then the Mass Historical Commission presents it to the State Review Board. Lots of steps here. If the Mass Historical Commission approves it, it will be submitted to the National Park Service. This process can take quite a while. Right now, it's about two years just for the Mass Historical Commission to complete its review. Public meetings will be held to keep the property owners informed, and when it comes to the time, a majority of the property owners must be in favor of the nomination. So, future surveys. So one thing that we've learned is that these surveys is an ongoing process. Every day, there's another building that turns 100, another area of town that turns 100, another monument. So we plan to continue documenting our buildings and our history. So what else is the commission working on? We have an oral history project preserving memories. It's almost ready to go, so we can get Dytonians to talk about their past, the history that they remember, their growing up in town, events in their lives, and also to help preserve the stories of the families and their connections to Dyton's early history. Because some of our ancestors, some of our residents have ancestors from the early days of Dyton. Not me, but some people do. We have a historical marker program for historical buildings, and that is on hold. We're searching for a new vendor to make the markers, but hope to continue it in the near future. And we're in the process of producing a walking tour brochure for our two National Register districts. We're also planning a brochure for 2026 on the Old Bristol Path, which went from Plymouth to Bristol, Rhode Island, and cut through Dyton. And Dyton, it's really from the town line of Taunton along Somerset Ave up to Elm Street, and would go through Swansea and then to Bristol. So we'll highlight those Dyton historic landmarks and buildings from early Dyton. Now, we have an opportunity to work with a student from UMass Dartmouth. Samantha Scheckler is a sociology and anthropology major and is looking for an internship opportunity. And so she and I have been chatting, and she has to have, it's an unpaid internship of 120 hours. And last night, the commission voted to have Samantha join us in January of 2025. So hopefully, she'll be able to help us with some of our many projects. She has talked with her professor, and her professors told her that all the things that we're doing meet the criteria that she would need for an internship. So I did chat with Ralph, and he said, just to mention it to you, and then we'll work from there. So I don't know if there's anything else we need to do?
Not that I have a word.
Okay. Good.
I brought up to Pat, I said, if she may need something for us for confirmation of the work for class grade.
Right.
So, as the internship goes on, just let us know.
Okay. I can do that. So do you have any questions about the survey?
Who knew? One, that you guys do all this. Two, and I was probably like you for a little while, but two, the fact that we had so many historical places here in Dyton.
Yeah.
Very impressive for what you guys do, and you're very informative. I don't have any questions now, other than I'm blown away.
Okay.
Same here, likewise. You guys are a very active commission, and we appreciate all you do, and you're definitely giving a lot back to our town, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. I just have a brief update for the 250th anniversary.
Nicole, do you have anything?
No, thank you. That was very thorough.
Oh, thank you. I know I've been talking about this the last couple of days a lot, so we do have a committee for the 250th anniversary, or the semi-quintcentennial of America, which is in 2026. So we're working on providing a celebration to honor Dyton's Revolutionary War veterans. As you know, we have a tentative reenactment battle and encampment planned. We're planning programs relating to the Revolutionary War, a possible sequel to the 1976 Lives and Fortune book, which the commission produced in 1976 with Helen Lane, the town historian, and it lists the Dyton men who served in the Revolutionary War. Members are working on documenting the graves in Dyton of all the Revolutionary War veterans. We have over 60 of them, and we're just double-checking to make sure that none of them are forgotten. We're coordinating with the community church for two readings of the Declaration of Independence, one in July of 2025 and one in August of 2026. The church is also giving a program on Ezra Stiles, the minister of the church in 1776. And we've reached out to the schools to hopefully involve the students in activities. And we're really excited about that connection, and we plan to reach out to other civic groups. As you know, we also, the 250th Anniversary Committee also has an article on the town meeting warrant for funding. If approved, the town will match any fundraising we do, up to $4,000, which is targeted for the reenactment. So we are seeking sponsorships and donations. We have had two informational tables, one in October and one at the Arts Festival in November. Lots of positive responses to that. You know, people, you know, stop by and chat, and they seem interested. Other people kind of, you know, like, they kind of like walk right by you and don't want to make eye contact, but you know they're looking. So, you know, but it seems to be positive and be well-received. So, as always, we appreciate the support of the Board of Selectment and of the townspeople.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fantastic. No, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Nicole, do you want to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot.
Good job, Pat. Mr. Frazado, can you come up here, please, to this podium? What I'm going to say, I'm not looking for you to respond to until we're done, okay?
Yep.
So you don't have to justify anything, you don't have to do anything until we've said what we've had to say, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak your mind.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be quite honest with you. We're not happy with you. You seem to be thumbing your nose at whatever restrictions we've put on you. Everything, no, you're going to let us speak first. Everything from hours of operation to what you carry, to doing things on the weekend, we're just not going to put up with it anymore. Your license is in jeopardy, and that's serious because we will stop your license completely. We've had complaints from the neighbors. They have talked to you. You have basically told them you will do what you want, and that's going to stop. So as of tonight, I'm going to recommend that to my colleagues that we suspend your license for one week. And if you do anything during that one week, we will fine you $300 for every occurrence that you do. Now, Mark has an opinion of his own, and I'm going to let him speak to what he like, and I'm sure Nicole has her opinion. Nicole, do you have anything you would like to say?
No, you pretty much said it all. Thanks, Peter.
Mark?
I think seven days is very, very, very nice, and I would like to see a 30-day suspension through December 13th.
Okay. We will decide on what the suspension will be after you have your chance to speak. The floor is yours, sir.
Well, I don't know what's going on. I haven't been working weekends and holidays. I mean, I've been walking in the back. I've been fighting a couple of skunks, but when it comes to working, I haven't been doing nothing, right? Weekends and before 7:00 and after 7:00.
Okay.
I haven't been working. Okay? I mean, I've been walking around the yard and everything, but I haven't made no noise. I haven't been doing nothing. Believe me. The only noise you hear from me is starting up my truck and leaving in the morning, and that's it.
What time do you start your truck?
Pardon?
What time do you start your truck?
What time do I start it? I let it warm up for about 10, 15 minutes. That's it.
What time do you start it?
About 5:00, 10:00, or 7:00.
That's not what we hear.
Yeah.
Even you have told us on a Saturday, you had repairs to do, that you were doing it on a Saturday, that you told me you had to be in Boston by a certain time, and therefore you left early, that you don't conduct business since the Saturday.
I don't do that no more. That's it.
Those are things that you have said to us in the past.
Yes.
Like I said, it's not fair to your neighborhood.
I've been going by the rules, sir.
I don't believe you have.
Oh, man.
So...
I wish somebody would take pictures. Take pictures of me.
Do you want to go to the 15, I mean, to 7-day, or do you want to split down the middle? Nicole, I'll ask the same questions of you.
I'd like to, we always work with each other, so I like to split down the middle.
Okay. Nicole?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So we're going to suspend your license for 15 days. That means 15 days you don't do anything outside other than normal maintaining your grounds. You're not going to do anything with your junk business. You can start your truck and leave, but you can't be bringing back junk for two weeks. If you do, and this is serious, it's a $300 fine every time you do something. It's not $300 a day. If you do something three times, it's going to be a $300 fine each time. That would be $900 you'd have to pay in order to maintain your business.
Could I say something, sir?
Yes, you can.
I want pictures to be taken to prove it.
Okay.
If there's no pictures, somebody's going to get in trouble.
Okay. That's your opinion.
I want pictures taken.
So do you understand that you cannot do anything for 15 days?
Yep.
Do you understand the fine if you don't?
Yes.
Okay. And that is all we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend Joseph Frazado's junk dealer's license for a period of 15 days, and for any violations to be fined at $300 a fine.
Through the chair, if I may, just bring in some information.
Sure.
I think I gave the chair some incorrect information about the fine. I do apologize for that. I was looking at their zoning. When I read further through the bylaw, and it states fines will be issued from Article 8, which is a $50 a day violation.
A $50 a day, okay. Then we stand corrected. It would be a $50 a day fine, not the $300 fine. I'm sorry, I misled you.
That's all right.
Want to change your...
I'll make that motion as amended with the $50 fine instead of $300.
Okay, motion made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Aye.
Nicole, do you want to do the announcements?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
The bores in committees have some vacancy. The Agricultural Commission has four. Cable Television Committee has one. Ceremony Commission has three. Commission on Disability has two. Conservation Commission has one. Historical Commission has one. And Open Space Committee has one. The Town of Dyton Food Bank will be held next, November 16th, located at Town Hall, and it is on the lower level. The Dyton Outdoor Fire Ban through November 15th. Dyton Fire Chief McGee is prohibiting any outdoor fires at least until Friday, November 15th, 2024. Any outdoor fires will spread and threaten people and property. This announcement comes on the heel of another announcement from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. They have declared a Level 2 significant drought in the Southeast Region. More information can be found at dytonfire.com.
Thank you. This is a time that we have public input. We do have two. So there's one now and then one later on in the meeting. Does everybody have anything they want to say right now? Yes, please.
Leisha Wilson, 2043, Somerset Ave. I have two things for the board. First, thank you for, again, protecting the neighborhood. I do appreciate your input and support of that. The other thing is for the MSBA, to remind everyone about the vote tomorrow, that there will be childcare available provided by Champions for anyone who wants to bring their child with them for the town meeting tomorrow night. And also that if anyone is looking for information about the MSBA, the feasibility study, and the condition of DES, they can always go to the DES website, and there is a link there to the MSBA, SBC's website, and it has information. There are some FAQs. There's a great video that Caitlin Lima put together, and there's also some other handouts that were provided at the open houses for anybody that wasn't able to attend.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to, is there anybody else who has public input at this time?
We're in the rest of the Agriculture Commission.
Not yet.
Okay.
But I'll let you know.
Okay.
It'll be very soon. Town administrators' report.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Just a few announcements. Again, just a follow-up to Selectman Pacheco's request at the last Selectmen's meeting regarding the Board of Health and the per diem. I just want to inform the board that I had a conversation with the Chair of the Board of Health, and we decided that we're going to put up the, repost the position for the Board of Health, for the Board of Health agent. We're taking the position generally that it's, the commissioners are doing work, going above and beyond their volunteer position, and it should be important to have a professional in that position. We are still continuing to look at the per diem position, so I asked the administrative assistant at the Board of Health to give me some information on it, how it operated in the past, and, you know, we'll do, we'll see what happens with the candidates who come in, and if we have to do a cost-benefit analysis in that, and we'll bring that to the board. Secondly, I was very happy and honored to attend the Veterans Day ceremonies. It was, I enjoyed it, my wife enjoyed it, and I want to thank the Selectmen here in Dyton, and also Pat Gales, Patrick Menjies, Colonel Bob Perry, and Ray Hogg for putting it together. It was a really, it was a really nice ceremony. Speaking of internships, the Highway Department, a Durfee school reached out to the Highway Department. The Highway Department is going to be interviewing an intern. It is the high school student. It is a paid position, but the cost will be reimbursed to the town. So that's a good thing, give somebody, somebody high school student a break. Our annual licenses went out, and we're getting a good response. People are coming back and paying their fees. And then, again, we're very, we, I think, tomorrow I'm going to be signing the annual certification for the green communities. So that's all I have at this time.
One question about the Durfee student. For what position at the Department of Highway? Is it mechanical? Is it just assisting? Hi, Tom.
They would not be operating equipment, a driving vehicle, CDO vehicles. They can do almost anything from sweeping the floor, labor work, out in the road they do, figuring out the jobs, you know, the math behind it and whatnot.
Great.
Awesome.
And how long is that for?
180 hours.
80 hours?
180.
180 hours, okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Nicole, do you have anything you want to add this evening?
I just want to start by thanking everyone that was involved in veterans' events, the breakfast, as well as the ceremony. I'm like, Ray, Bella, Paul, Tom, Dave, anyone else that I missed. It was both the breakfast was phenomenal, as well as the ceremony, and thank you for all their hard work. Just real quickly, in regards to the Health Department, as you can see, I'm not in, I'm not there today because I am at the MHOA conference. I'm spending a lot of my time telling everyone that will listen to me that Dyton has some open positions. I'm probably going to get a restraining order because people are sitting in hearings with me, but I did take all the positions. I posted them on the app that they gave us for the conference. There's over 600 people at this conference, so I'm really hoping that we're getting the word out there, though I know we posted it everywhere, but it doesn't hurt. So that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. Mark, do you have anything?
I have a few things. First, I was lucky to attend one of the MSBA open houses on October 30th, and I think the committee... And I think the committee and our superintendent did a fantastic job showing residents around and showing residents the condition of the school. And like our vice chair, Lisa Wilson, said, we do have a website with tons of information so folks can be informed for tomorrow night for that very important vote for feasibility study for our elementary school. I want to also piggyback on what everyone else has already said on our Veterans Day ceremony was well attended. And they did, everyone did a fantastic job. And most importantly, thank you to our veterans in town. I want to thank the Fire Department. I know they've been very busy with brush fires and getting the word out on the drought that we're in. So I know they've been working extra hard lately, so thank you to our Fire Department. And lastly, just a little over a week ago, we had our state election. And I just wanted to kind of give some numbers. So we have 6,597 registered voters in town. And out of that, 4,873 voted. So that's a 74% voter turnout, which is...
That's great.
Pretty amazing. So 2,339 voted in person, EV, vote by mail and absentee. So that's about 48%. So these are unofficial results, but just some of the races for president. Harrison Walls got 1,906 votes in Dyson, and Trump and Vance got 2,803. Senator and Congress Elizabeth Warren got 1,775 votes. And John Deaton, 2,920. For Representative in Congress Jake Auchincloss, he got 2,987 votes. Counselor Joseph Ferreira, 2,209. And Kristen Condon, 1,833. Senator in General Court Kelly Duner, 2,505. Joseph Pacico, 1,848. And James Dupont, 184. Representative in General Court Pat Hadad, 1,952. And Justin Thurber, 2,626. Clerk of Courts Jennifer Sullivan, 2,984. Register of Deeds Barry Amaral, 3,148. County Commissioner John Mitchell, 1,836. Julie Rogirio, 1,718. And Gregory DeMello, 1,460. For the School Committee, the Dyson Representative Edward F. Dutre Jr., 3,317 votes in Dyson. And for our questions, question one, audit the legislature. Yes votes was 3,129. No votes, 1,364. MCAS got 3,086 yes votes and 1,619 no votes. Question three, driver unions, 1,946 yes votes, 2,592 nos. Question four psychedelics, 1,763 yes, 2,854 no. Question five, tip workers, 1,200 yes, 3,470 no. For our debt exclusion, question six, yes votes was 2,157. No votes was 2,221, so that failed. Question seven for the BA debt exclusion, 2,065 yes, 2,313 no, that also failed. Those are unofficial results, but I want to thank our town clerk's office and our election workers and everyone else who worked so hard on Election Day to make it a success. And of course, thank you for our voters for turning out. During public input, the next part I'd like to talk about the debt exclusion a little more, but I'm done for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to remind everybody that there is a town meeting tomorrow night at seven o'clock at the high school. And the biggest thing on there will be the passing or not passing of the money for the elementary funding. I also got to thank Tom Ferry. He did a tremendous job. It always goes unnoticed. The breakfast went off without a hitch. And then to set up all those chairs for the veteran ceremony, and he worked so hard. And thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Now we're moving on to old business. This is a review, discuss and act. It's appointments to the Agricultural Commission. Sir, this will, you'll have just a second. I'll let you know when you get to speak your mind.
I signed.
Okay. So we have some openings. I believe there are four on the commission. Am I right, Ken? Okay. And we have an opportunity to fill those tonight. And I don't know where any interviews done prior to this? Ken, Barbara?
No.
No?
Not that I know of.
Okay. So Susan Madiris is not here. And she said that she could probably make the next selectmen's meeting, so we'll just table her for this evening. Laura Smith. Hi, how are you?
Lovely, thank you.
So you sure you want to do this?
Well, I don't know.
Nobody's twisting your arm?
Is she in charge?
Is she in charge? Yes.
All right, I'll go ahead.
Oh, okay. Wow, his good looks. Sexiest man of the year, right there. That came out today, that's why I'm saying that. But, okay. Sir, at this time, do you have something you want to say about the...
Yes, last thing up there.
If you don't mind, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
It's John Buffington, 2685 Horton Street, North Dyson, Mass. I am a member of the Ag Commission, still a member of the Ag Commission. When these people were nominated, none of the people on the Ag Commission were notified. And then, on another note, just to, I think we should have been notified that these people were going to be part of this process.
Sure.
So that we could sit in on any discussion that was made about them coming on board.
Okay.
Whether, because we're not looking for people with agendas.
Yep.
We're looking for people that are looking for the betterment of their livestock in town.
Sure.
And the second part of this is that yesterday I received in the mail from the Board of Health, and I assume that it has to go through the Selectman's office before it comes to the citizens of the town.
I don't know what it is.
Well, it was a barn license fee for $25, which was discontinued last year. And now it's been reinstated at $15 higher than it was two years ago.
Okay.
And then included in that letter was also a tax notification wanting me or anybody else that has a barn on their property or livestock on their property to fill out this tax information to make sure they can check the records in the office to make sure your taxes is paid. That's not our job. That's the guys that are taking care of the taxes. That's what we pay them for. It's not our responsibility to fill that out.
Sure.
That's all I have. I was just upset that we weren't approached as the Board of, as being on that Ag Commission, that we weren't approached. Thank you.
Do you have anything you want to add, sir?
Kenneth Arujo, 1460 William Street, Dyson, Mass. I'm a member of the acting, or was the chairman of the Ag Commission. We've had some issues as far as trying to get some people. You were so kind to send me out a tentative list, but I haven't got one of the candidates. I did not receive information on her. So it's been a kind of hectic last three weeks since we've been in communication on what's going on between, what's been going on with my business, wrapping up harvest and doing the fundraiser for the town for the, you know, the Hots Festival and such. So I apologize to anyone for kind of dropping the ball the last couple of weeks. But again, you know, we're here tonight. We can listen.
Yep.
And tentatively schedule a meeting sometime the first part of December and interview and go from there.
Okay.
That works with everyone. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Laura Smith, since you're first, why do you want to be on the Agricultural Committee? Sure, if you'd like. Not if you like, you have to. Just the microphones there, not for everybody to make fun of you.
I did send in my letter last, like, maybe a couple hours ago, because I didn't know about this as well. This was last minute. I happened to look at the agenda, so...
Something got dropped, and I don't know why, but I apologize if that happened. I think we exchanged emails this morning. Was that with you?
I sent an email to you this morning, yes, and Nicole responded saying she was going to let Karen know about this. And Karen sent me the volunteer form. So the reason why I want to be on the Agricultural Commission is because I, if you've read my history, I've been a farmer all of my life. I'm a fifth generation farmer. My grandparents, Victor and Mary Raposa, who own Lane Gardens, I now own Lane Gardens. I also operate my parents' farm in Rehoboth Oakdale Farms.
Wow.
So I have a long history, and I've known Kenny since I was a little kid. And he's done a lot for my family as well. So I have a lot of history in agriculture, and my grandparents absolutely loved this town.
Sure.
As I said, I, they, in my opinion, they grow the best strawberries ever. I used to sell them as a child, all the way up through college. So I want to make sure that Dyson is going to stay the agricultural community that I remember growing up on the CDC as the Ag representative. And I'm glad I'm there because I feel like I do have that voice for agriculture. But I don't see a whole lot of agriculture happening in town. I want to make sure that I can protect the businesses that are here now and hopefully grow even more. Because we're losing so much farmland in the state, it's crazy.
Sure.
So I am on another commission to make sure that we keep Massachusetts farming as well.
Very nice. Mark, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't, but thank you.
Nicole, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Everyone's like a little dot, so I can't really see Laura good. But Laura, are you also involved with Bruslerby in some form?
Yes, I'm the vice president of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I can't see, I wasn't sure if it was you, but all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
You can have a seat. Thanks. Yes, sir.
I've also been putting some feelers out, and I had a response today from Milton Texera under the Sun Farm. He is willing to come on, so if we could add his name to the list for interviews.
Sure, absolutely.
I don't know if you want you and I sit down sometime?
Yep.
And get this all organized, and then we can go from there.
Sure, pick a date, and I'm wide open.
Okay.
Thank you. Joanne, hi, how are you? Nice to see you again.
Hello.
What we're doing is saving some time, so this way you don't have to come back before the selectmen after we conduct an interview. We can just approve it at that time that Kenny and I meet, if that's acceptable to you. Your names will just come back before the selectmen. You don't have to be here, and we'll probably approve the names. Joanne?
Hi, my name is...
Nice to see you again.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
My name is...
Why do you want to be on the committee?
Well, I've been a farmer for over 50 years. I grew up on a dairy farm as a kid. I started horse riding when I was three. So I'm more of an equestrian farmer. I have a boarding facility. I have an equestrian facility in town, which I actually closed three years ago to boarding. So I have my own horses in my backyard. I'm very passionate about animals and being an advocate and a voice for them. I worked at Suffolk Downs Racetrack on the weekends, and I've advocated for thoroughbred racing for 13, 14 years now. I worked with an organization called Kenta out of Suffolk Downs. But when Suffolk Downs closed, Kenta went away, and the organization is just based out of California now. But I do advocate for standard breeds and thoroughbreds as well. I'm very, very passionate about wanting to be on this committee because I have a lot to bring to the table. I have a lot to offer. I have a lot of years' experience, and it's a way for me to be able to be involved more in the community in this town. I've been here almost 10 years. I came from Westport. And I'm just very nervous. I would, I also want to be on this commission because I feel that people need to be educated in this right-to-farm community. And people need to be educated in a way that, as the Ag Committee, we could bring resources to people that want to get into farming. I'm very, I'm very passionate about people that want to farm. If people want to get into farming, but they're not sure how, you know, that we could be available for these people, whether it be a phone call or an email or if they have questions that they might want to ask, you know, to be able to raise livestock here in town. There are, you know, people that go into this right-to-farm situation but really don't have an idea or a clue what they're doing. And then the livestock suffer with that. So I'm all about it. I don't know whether it is a good idea to, you know, recommend that people that do want to do farming in town be registered with the Board of Health. I have to be registered. I have to have a license. I don't know if it's a way of being able to kind of monitor...
Sure.
You know, the way that people are farming. But I think that, you know, we all probably have a lot to bring to the table, whether it be horticulture or agriculture.
Right, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mark, do you have anything you want to add?
I don't. Fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
So we'll leave it at this. Ken, when you're ready, just give me a call.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Do I have to reapply now on Laura's?
No, you're all set, sir. We don't want you to go anywhere.
I'm not going far.
Okay, so let's table this issue until Mr. Arujo and I have a chance to talk. Certainly, we can do it here, or we can meet wherever you feel is comfortable, and we'll have the selectmen do some meetings, interviews with you, and we'll get the board put back together.
I'll do it. I'll text you tomorrow.
Sure.
We'll figure out a date.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Okay.
Very good.
Somebody have a motion to table it?
Motion to table the appointments to the Agricultural Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All those approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Cameron is an aye. Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. And we'll see you whenever. Thanks.
Just on the stable permit, I have horses, and I've had a stable permit since we moved to town. And I know that tax form is basically for any permit in town.
Yep.
You need to fill out that form, and it basically means that you're current in your taxes.
Okay.
The towns aren't going to issue you a permit unless you're current in your taxes. So I believe that's in the Board of Health authority, and they're following the same permit process for anyone else.
Does the permit for what, $15?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure what their fees are, but I know there's bond permits and stable permits, so yeah, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to new business. This is a review, discuss and act. Recommendation from Brook Street Solar Pilot Agreement.
Chairman?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Good. I have not received an email in response to whether or not Grass Law Finance accepted the tax payment schedule and the pilot agreement that they requested. There was a voicemail left from Mr. Lopez for me to call him. I am not going to call him tonight. I will do it tomorrow when I have somebody with me because I'm sure he wants to talk about the tax payment schedule.
Sure.
Situation is that we have our tax consultant apply the value to the personal property that is at the site. Based on the value that he established for all of that personal property, he came up with a total tax of $823,172 payable over 20 years. So I did what we usually do, the front-end loading, so forth and so on. I followed that to Mr. Hafes and asked him to review it. And he got back and said that his financial team didn't agree with it. It was too high, basically. And the reasoning, their reasoning was, because they looked at historic data and other solar farms they have. Well, quite frankly, historic data and other solar farms is not relevant to the way we calculate personal property values. The gentleman that we hire as our tax consultant is certified to do this work, but it's part of the revenue. So, it's not a situation of trying to negotiate a deal. It's a matter of, this is what your personal property is valued at, and this is what the taxes are. So, as I said, I have returned his call. I will do it tomorrow. But tonight, because I don't have in writing a response from him saying, yes, we accept it, or no, we don't, I'm asking that the board consider approving the pilot agreement as submitted. That means with no changes anywhere. So that if he tells me tomorrow, and I will request it in writing if he says orally, I can go to town meeting tomorrow and say that the Grasshopper has accepted the pilot agreement in its entirety, and that I can then ask the voters to approve it. So, your approval tonight would be conditional on his written approval. If I don't get that approval tomorrow, then when I get up at town meeting, I'm going to request that the voters table this. This is, will be the second time that a pilot agreement for this solar farm has been tabled. The last time it came up, I had two pilot agreements. I presented the first one. It got approved. When I was going to, when I had planned to present the one with Brook Street, they never gave me the final information I needed, and I didn't feel I had an accurate inventory, so it got tabled. So, this will be the second time around, and at this point in time, all I can do is ask for conditional approval. Obviously, if I get, and listen, if I get it in writing, I can move forward. If not, it will be tabled, and it will sit there until they decide what they want to do. I think part of the concern I have is that there is misinformation out there. Some of these companies who build these things as investments, and they quite often change hands. They seem to think that by negotiating a pilot agreement, they're going to get some kind of a reduction in taxes or tax break. That isn't how this works. It is based on the valuation of the personal property. So, I have no other place to go. I, I sat, Mrs. Chek, Chek and I sat with our tax consultant. We went over the whole thing. I have the spreadsheet. We worked through it, and this is where we are. And so, that's what my request is tonight.
Sure. Nancy, why would they agree to a pilot agreement if their intentions are to, to sell it down the road? Because they, they more taxes now than they will eighteen years from now. Why, why would they want to?
You are correct in that. One of the things, what is beneficial is, number one, they'll know their taxes for twenty years. If they sell, whoever buys it is going to look at it, and whatever year it's at when they buy it, they can still see their taxes for that year and the taxes for the remaining of the lifetime of the agreement. But it also means to them and to other town, they only have to dispute their tax bill for the next twenty years.
Right.
And I tell them, look, look at the total. The total is what's important. The methodology the town uses to assess this, being front-end loading, which we've done, and I've explained a number of times how we do it, that is really what's not important, unless they've got somebody that they told, oh, these taxes are going to be low and all that. Well, if you look at a front-end loading agreement, obviously, they're not, that's not relevant to what we do. What they do with their investment, who buys it, who invested it, is not relevant. All we want to do is, this is the value of your personal property. This is what the total taxes will be for the life of the agreement. That's what you have to bring to. We actually, years ago, we actually had a company that, when they got the twenty-year, fifteen or twenty-year schedule, they reversed it and said, this is what we want. And Carol and I just laughed and said, no, no, it doesn't work that way. Front-end loading, you pay the highs in the beginning.
Right.
So, this is what we've done. The other thing, too, is when that first pilot agreement was presented, back in twenty-one, I believe it was, the amount, the value of the personal property was lower, which meant the taxes were lower. I do not know how that personal property was valued was determined. I didn't work on that. I got those numbers and put them into the agreement, but at the time, I don't even know if I was on the Board of Assessors. I know I got elected in April, but I'm not really sure with this whole thing that put together. And my concern is, if that was put together by the then-Board of Assessors, and I'm not trying to label them, but if that's what they came up with, and we have our professional look at this, and he says, this is the value, my feeling is it's possible that value for the personal property, what, three years ago, was underestimated. But that's why I say I've got to go with what I've, by professional assess. These aren't deals where they sign for twenty years and we're going to cut your taxes. That's not why I'm doing this, not at all. And I did mention that to Mr. Hafes in one of the emails. It doesn't work that way. We tried to come up with a number, our best estimate based on information. It's a fair tax agreement, and I pointed out to him. I have never had a solar company reject a tax agreement, other than the company that sued the town in Superior Court in the benefit and lost. And eventually, they came back again wanting another, another shot at it, and we put it together again, and they still didn't like the taxes. So, they'll get billed each year based on what we determine is the value of their personal property, and the gentleman who does this work for us will be involved in that. But to have them come back and say, oh, well, that's not acceptable.
Right.
Well, what's the base on? I know what our position is based on. And if you want to talk history and other solar farms, as I just said, our history is good. I've never had one rejected by a solar company. I haven't had one rejected by a town meeting vote. And I feel we treat them fairly, and if, if anything ends up at a, a tax board, appellate tax board questioning anything, not that this can be disputed, because once they agree with it, they can't go to the appellate tax board for twenty years. But if somebody questions it, I don't know what other expertise we can possibly, possibly bring in.
Sure.
So, I think, I think the town's position in this eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars is fair. It's firm, and I have, I have no solutions to Mr. Hafes other than to say, tell me yes and no. That's all I need.
Great. Okay. I think the board can make a recommendation tonight. Do you want to make a motion, Mark?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-year pilot agreement with Grasshopper. For the solar farm located on Brook Street, the total property taxes for the life of the agreement is eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Is that exact? I'm sorry, go ahead.
If I may?
Yeah.
It's certainly, we're personal before property taxes, because we're only talking personal property. Real estate taxes are the responsibility of the trust that owns the land. Okay?
Yeah. Okay. Nicole, do you have anything you want to second it, or you want to discuss?
I seconded.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Nancy, you're all set. Thank you.
And members of the board, as soon as I get an answer?
Yeah.
Hopefully, I'm going to have it before the meeting. I will send out an email, so you'll know whether or not they agreed or if it's going to be tabled tomorrow night.
Sure thing.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew.
Uh, this is a review, discuss, and act. Ratify memorandum of understanding for the town accountant.
I'll make a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding with the town accountant, Serena Amrell.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Ratify memorandum of understanding administrative assistance to the town administrator and Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding between the town of Dayton and Leann M. Kerwin.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ratify memorandum of understanding to the Dayton Permanent Firefighters Association Local forty-three, thirty-two.
I'll make a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding.
Can I just comment on that one?
Sure.
I just wanted to make the board aware that during the course of reviewing the MOU to daily breaking, they noticed that there was a typographical error. So, it was just the numbers not matching the words, and Nicole, I'm sorry that you don't have it in front of you, but I can supply that to you. So, I did the research, ran it by council, talked to everyone involved, and was advised that we could put it under housekeeping.
Okay.
So, we did the research. We found out which way it should go, so it is there. So, if you approve, I ask that you ratify it with that one edit.
One addition. I mean, correction. Sure. So, we need a motion on the floor with the correction.
So, I'll make a motion to ratify the memorandum of understanding for the Dayton Permanent Firefighters Association, Local four-three-three-two, with the amendment in Article fourteen oh one under housekeeping, as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Assign a Board of Selectmen member for liaison to the AFS CME Local seventeen oh one Dayton Highway Department. Anybody want to do it? If not, I can do it. Okay, is there a motion on the floor then, Mark?
Are you sure? You don't mind doing it?
I don't mind doing it.
No? Okay.
If you want to do it, that's fine.
I'm happy with, I, I think you do a great job. So, I'll make a motion to-
I'm still recovering from mine.
I feel bad, so as long as it's not too much on your plate, but I would make a motion to assign Chairman Peter Karen to the Local seventeen oh one Dayton Highway Department for the selectmen liaison.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
This is a two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five snowplow contract. Any questions, Tom?
I don't have any questions.
You guys have any concerns?
Was, was it this, that, if you got your paperwork in early, you get an ex, you get more money an hour? Is that this?
Yeah, this is, this is actually the same as last year.
Okay.
I just changed the date and the time for that deadline, for that incentive to get their paperwork in early.
So, we've always had the incentive, or we've had it at least last-
No, last year was the first year.
Okay, awesome.
It seemed to work well. They were excited about that. All but one had their paperwork in.
Good.
Nice.
We've been monitoring the surrounding towns as usual for the rates. They've been very quiet.
Have they?
Yes, and we're still right near the top.
Okay.
I did have one vendor that had two trucks back out, so now we're down to just one vendor with two trucks at this time.
Wow. So, what are we going to do?
Move along. So, I, I recommend that we accept this, so I can advertise the rates-
Okay.
And pursue some other vendors.
All right, this is two issues. This is for the snowplow contract, so we need a motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five snowplow contract as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, this, this is for the snowplow drivers' rates. This is, again, a review, discuss, and act.
It's just to send their contract, or basically?
These are at will, casual snow, snow drivers, yes.
Okay. Seems very reasonable. I have no, no questions.
Nicole, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
A motion on the floor then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the pay rate changes for FY twenty-five as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you do weights and measures, Tom?
No.
Okay, Jim does, right?
Thanks, Tom.
I'm not sure, but who does that? I think that's Tom Dell through Jim?
Yeah, through Jim, but he's responsible for it. Okay, this is a review, discuss, and act, the contract for the weights and measures. You don't know anything about it, Tom?
No, just what I read through the contract appears to come from the state, so it's pretty standard contract.
Okay.
Yep.
Then is there a motion on the floor to approve a contract?
I will make a motion to approve the weights and measures contract through the state as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this is, again, a review, discuss, and act, the Main Street Drainage Award of bids.
If I may give a little explanation to this, to the, to the selectmen. These are all associated with the, with the, with the Main Street. The first three are part of the bidding that, which we had to go back to in the town, which we got, which we got the bids for. I just want to point out, you received a, an email earlier. These, these projects were, was supposed to be fall under, under ARPA payments. Unfortunately, we received news today that our ARPA, that our ARPA request was denied for the reason why? Because it, it came in after, after, after the date. I just want to announce to the board that we're appealing that decision. That appeal is, is next Tuesday, the nineteenth. So, I will be there making the case, and hopefully make a strong enough case that they do fall under ARPA. But town accountant is here, but just to point out also that these funds are already earmarked in article money, so we do have the funds available for these, for contracts.
So, you know, do you want to add anything, or we're all set? Okay. I have no issues with them. It's unfortunate, but it happens, and maybe we can appeal it and wait on, will, will we know on Tuesday, or?
I don't know. I, I hope so.
Thank you. Okay, then is there a motion on the floor, please?
These are, so all of these are the low bidders. J and R Precast, LaRusso Corp., and Putnam Pipe are all the low bidders?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make that motion to approve the award of bids for the Main Street Drainage Award for J and R Precast, LaRusso Corp., and Putnam Pipe as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is an author's, again, a review, discuss, and act, authorized contract for Main Street trench paving. LaRusso Corp., three-twenty South Street, Plainville. Tom, do you? Oh, hi.
So, this, this has already been cured through the association's contract, and this is just to identify the specific tonnage that's needed for the job.
Okay. Okay, I have nothing of concern.
For the paving, can we do another outreach, public outreach, like another gill foil article or something, so the folks, residents know? For dates?
Oh, of paving?
Yeah, trench paving. Is that what we're talking about, trench paving?
Yeah, that's, that's, while we're digging, they're going to know the asphalt's right behind it.
Yeah, but just so residents know it's coming, you know?
No, this is just a temporary patch. That's what this is. This is not the overlay.
Okay, so that won't, will it impact traffic in any way?
The whole project will impact traffic, and that will be public notified in each step, yes.
So, those dates-
I, I don't think you want a specific, just a patching. The whole project, each step will be-
Yes, I agree with you, as long as, as long as we're getting the word out.
Okay, Nicole, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Okay, Mark. Motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize a contract for Main Street trench paving for LaRusso Corp., three-twenty- Corp., 320 South Street, Plainville.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Tom, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Tom.
Correspondents, this is a review, discuss, and act, resignation of David Marvel from the Historical Commission. Dave is busy as always and is stepping down from the Historical Commission. So does anybody want to make a motion to accept that resignation?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Dave Marvel from the Historical Commission with thanks and appreciation.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave, as always.
Thank you.
Thanks for resigning, but thanks for your work.
Yep. Approval of the warrants.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the warrants paid by October 31st, 2024, 18A-25, in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and nineteen cents. 18B-25, in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Warrants paid by November 7th, 2024, 19A-25, for one hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and one cent. 19B-25, in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. 19C-25, in the amount of three million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. And warrants paid by November 14th, 2024, 28-25, for one hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-eight cents. And 20B-25, for four hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and five cents.
Nicole?
I'll second that.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 This is, again, a chance for public input. Is anybody on the screen that has anything they want to add? Yes, Tom?
I, I, Mr. DiCapo, we're talking, we're aware of some grants that may be available to help us with the Main Street project. I didn't know if he needs to support the board to pursue that or not, and it's kind of crazy, but I would encourage the board to support him. He's interested in looking into it.
Sure, we would always support that, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Yes.
The one, the one that I'm interested in is a bit competitive, so we'll use that to keep it out.
All right. What's the time frame on these? All over the place?
They actually, the grant applications open December 12th, which is not far away.
No.
Those are during the winter.
Okay.
I believe they opens, the awards is March, I believe, so all these finals are fairly quick.
Sure. Great. Thank you. So we wouldn't make a motion tonight, but when the time comes up, we can give him the authorization to, although he has the authorization to apply for the grants. Thank you. There's no more public input, so...
I have one more, if you don't mind.
Oh, that's right, you just said something.
Yeah, no problem. So unfortunately, the debt exclusion did fail at our state election, and I saw, you know, I had some public feedback about us putting it on a future election, so I just wanted the public to know my stance on it, and it is that I think the Board of Selectmen and all of the departments that helped us did a good job getting the word out. We had a public forum. We really wanted to do a mailer, but we got advice from town council we couldn't. You know, we talked about it multiple meetings, we distributed flyers, and we put it on an election with 74% voted turnout. We reached as much of the town as we possibly could. There's really no election in the next four years that will get as much public turnout. So the people have spoken in my mind, so I would never entertain it, just as one individual selectman, but I would like to see on our next agenda, not sure how the board feels about it, discussing a hiring freeze. I know we're good for this fiscal year, however, I know there's some hiring in process, I'm not talking about that, but any future vacancies that occur, I would hate for folks to hire people on, and fiscal 26 is going to be a different picture, so I was hoping we could discuss a hiring freeze at our next meeting.
Okay, we can certainly put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
I have, I agree with you. We gave them a chance, and it was turned down. You don't keep having votes to get the one that you want.
Right.